The notice requirement provided by the court opens up with being law and satisfied. A notice was promptly given and now this is how we can transmit it to the County News and Starlet on Wednesday, January 9th, 2019, as well as posting on the board of the State Department of Public Works. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Amati.
Here.
Davis.
Present.
Good.
Present.
McCray.
Present.
Storch.
Here.
Hockaday.
Here.
Council President.
Present.
Vice President, we have all members present in the court.
Please rise to the pledge of allegiance and may they stand before the Constitution. And the Constitution, this is to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we ask God, the giver of peace and lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the life of spirit on all those who work for justice and peace.
Amen. May I have a motion to approve the amendments of the regular reading of June 17, 2019?
Move.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying? Consideration of public hearing, second reading and final passage. Clerk, please read MC 2019-16 by title and per certified that the ordinance has applied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2019-16 is an ordinance granting title 39 jurisdiction to the city of Plainfield over roads and parking lots located at the property known as 1444-147 South Avenue and 512-516 Terrell Road, shown on Plainfield City Tax Map Sheet 38, Planning Board Application 2019-02, Wawa Food Market and Field Wing Station. It is hereby certified that notice of the public hearing on this ordinance is published in the Corian News on June 22, 2019.
Thank you. The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. Turn the mic and give your name and address.
Chet Prusvoko. Excuse me, sorry. Chet Prusvoko, 1317 East 7th Street, Plainfield, New Jersey. I know I'm Johnny come lately, but I'm trying to follow a little bit of what was going on with this Wawa. You know, it's already past the different stages, planning, first reading and now tonight's second reading. I don't think that's a very good choice for that area. I don't know what kind of tax revenues it's going to bring to the city and how it's going to help reduce the taxes in the city as a whole. It's going to create a problem as far as I can see traffic, especially now with the other condos being built. Plainfield didn't need a Wawa there at all. Scotch Plains, Wawa wanted to build their gas station, Wawa and food market on Route 22 and Mountain Avenue for about the past three years, and Scotch Plains turned them down time and time and time again. I hope this is a good move for Plainfield on East 7th Street for about 42 years. And behind me was the strip mall where an Italian village was, and I don't know how many of you remember, there used to be a mobile gas station there, and that was nothing but noise and problems all the time until it was closed. That's all I have to say. I hope before you do take your final vote, you think about these things because it doesn't seem like too much was thought about prior to. And I didn't realize what was going on until about a month and a half ago when I read it on the news item on the computer and I couldn't make last meeting. I understand there was about 100 people here, I don't know if that's true or not, but tonight it seems like almost nobody's here for that. But again, before your final vote, please think about if Wawa really needs to be there. Thank you.
May I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any staying? May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law. May I have a roll call? Well, for a second, I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call on MC 2019-16. Councilmembers Amati.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Storch.
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday.
Yes.
Council President Mills Ransom.
Yes.
That's unanimous, this ordinance is adopted on second reading and final passage.
Council President. Just a note of clarification. This vote was simply to give our police department jurisdiction to enforce traffic regulations on that property.
Does this mean we started, I was like, I don't know what he said.
I'm sorry, Council President, I didn't hear it.
I didn't either because I was talking to the staff, which is this is the first reading. Would you, Councilman Storch, like to repeat what you said?
Yes. The vote that we just took was simply to give our police department jurisdiction to enforce traffic regulations on that property.
Thank you for your input. Clerk, please read MC 2019-17 by title and per certified that the ordinance has applied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2019-17 is the ordinance of the city of Plainfield and the county of Union authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with 829 South Urban Renewal LLC and granting the taxes into respect for certain property identified in the city's tax map as Block 645, Block 14, and identified in the city's tax records as 829-881 South Avenue. It is hereby certified that notice of this public hearing on this ordinance is published in the Corian News on June 22, 2019.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance.
Timothy Pecano, Martin Avenue. Again, we're giving another tax break. How many have we counted this year, in the last years? When are we going to get a tax break for our own property taxes? We give everybody who comes in to develop another break. Now, we noticed that the change was that now it's an urban renewal, so that means that they're going to get the breaks. But how many more do we have to before the residents of the city get the break? That's all I'm asking is, when do we see a break? We've had an increase, we need breaks. Thank you.
May I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any staying? May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Question.
Yeah.
Could the administration please explain to the council on special remorse to the public what the benefit, what the financial benefit is in comparison to the current taxes on this property?
Yes, I had the exact numbers before us at the first reading of this particular ordinance, but the current taxes are probably $100,000 a year on that property and that everyone can attest to somewhere below that site. And the incremental revenue to the city over the next 30 years is in the millions. I don't have the exact number before me right now, but I did have that at the first reading. Thank you. She just gave me the numbers. Okay, so again, you know, in terms of pilot revenue for this particular project, let me just get clarity on it. You know, I was even wrong about the, her property taxes on the property is $11,246, that's the municipal share of taxes. With the pilot, in the first year, will generate from municipality $115,000 to $155,000 in pilot revenue. So it's a huge increase in the amount of pilot revenue. In addition, this is a flood zone area, and this particular developer in order to meet the DEP requirements is spending about $2.5 million in the event, to build a bridge, in the event we have a 100-year flood incident. So I consider the city fortunate to have a developer who's willing to take on that additional cost. This project is generating in terms of return on investment in neighborhood 3%. So you think about investing your money and getting a 3% return. What the Economic Development Authority likes to see is somewhere between 13% to 18% return on investment, that's a good deal. Most of our development projects are less than 10%, and 3% is very low, so those are the numbers on the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call.
Roll call on MC 2019-17. Councilmembers Amati.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Storch.
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday.
Yes.
Council President Mills Ransom.
Yes.
That's unanimous, this ordinance is adopted on second reading and final passage.
Clerk, please read MC 2019-18 by title and per certified that the ordinance has applied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2019-18 is the ordinance repealing Chapter 2 Administration, Article 9 Department of Public Works, Section 2:9:5, Borough of Sewers and Pumping Stations of the Municipal Code of the City of Plainfield. It is hereby certified that the notice of this public hearing on this ordinance is published in the Corian News on June 22, 2019.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. May I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any staying? May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Amati.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Storch.
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday.
Yes.
Council President Mills Ransom.
Yes.
That's unanimous, this ordinance is adopted on second reading and final passage.
Clerk, please read MC 2019-19 by title and per certified that the ordinance has applied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2019-19 is the ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 2 Administration, Article 9 Department of Public Works, Section 13 Division of Recreation to rename the Greenbrook Trial to the Albert T. McWilliams Memorial Trial. It is hereby certified that the notice of public hearing on this ordinance is published in the Corian News on June 22, 2019.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. May I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any staying? May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Amati.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Storch.
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday.
Yes.
Council President Mills Ransom.
Yes.
That's unanimous, this ordinance is adopted on second reading and final passage.
Public comments limited to resolutions, motions and ordinances to be introduced on first reading. A total of 30 minutes has been allocated with public comments limited to the resolutions ordinance being considered this evening. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk with a record. Each speaker will be given three minutes. The floor is now open.
I move that we close.
Yes. You have a motion to adjourn. Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Any objections? Clerk, will you please offer the resolutions?
Resolution R 231-19 authorizing approval of certain bingo raft licenses. This is what a Plainfield like is.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying?
Resolution R 232-19 authorizing purchase of electricity supply services for public use on an online auction website.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Yes, got one, Davis.
If we can just get more clarification on what this actually means.
For the last number of years, the city has gone out to auction, you know, for the supply of electricity and on occasion for the, you know, supply of gas, you know, because PSENG and other utilities are required to have or allow for alternative supplies. And so we've been able to save $18,000 over the last three years as a result of going out to auctions. And we anticipate being able to save at least, you know, $6,000 with the current projections. But there is a threshold, so, you know, and the reason the resolution is written the way it is, it says unless we get offered a price of $0.93, we won't do a deal. So we're already trying to bake it in so that there's a guaranteed savings to the city. And what happens here is you match PSENG rate against what this competitor is doing because it's online bidding. So they have to go bid against each other and we expect to be able to, for electrical supply, save money.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Okay. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying?
Resolution R 233-19 providing for the combination of certain bond ordinances.
Are there any questions?
Yes, for the benefit of the public, can you explain what these bonds are for and how they work and everything?
There are two facets to this resolution. The first is for bonds, which is basically for something longer than a year's term. And then bond anticipation notes, which runs for a year. So we have $24,592,000 in bonds being proposed and $6,725,000 in bond anticipation notes, which would fund this year's bond ordinance and last year's bond ordinance when you look at the bond anticipation notes. It's really to get long-term financing for our prior year's debts. So in your packages, you'll see that there are a whole number of prior ordinances cited there. So it's really going for long-term financing, you know, between now and 2030, you know, for $24,592,000 in debt. It's something we had been anticipating a need to do because bond anticipation notes, you know, must be financed at some point. You can go out 10 years with regard to the renewing of bond anticipation. They have a one-year term. And so when you look at what's been going on in the market over the last couple of months, it looks like interest rates are going to stay down for a while. So the timing is right for us to go to the market now as opposed to sometime in the future, in the future date 2020, 2021, you know, where we run the risk of seeing interest rates go off. So if interest rates go up, you know, it looks like we can save somewhere between $1,481,630 to as much as $3 million in interest costs by going to the market now.
Thank you.
So, Councilwoman, just to simplify, this ordinance, this resolution takes several different bond ordinances, puts them all into one resolution and allows for us to get a lower interest rate in the city, will ultimately see savings.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, I'm.
Yes, the projected savings that was just mentioned, over what period of time would that be?
It's looking out over 12 years.
No, this is not 10 years, it's over 12 years.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Move.
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying?
Resolution R 234-19 approving, I'm sorry, approving Brown &amp; Brown Consulting and Authorizing Profession Service Agreement.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying?
Resolution R 235-19 authorizing lease slash purchase of the copy machines for the police department.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying?
Resolution, Resolution R 236-19 authorizing approval to amend the calendar year municipal, the calendar year 2019 municipal operating budget.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Okay. Councilor Davis.
Can the administration just talk more about what the lead rate entails?
Oh, yes, the lead rate is approximately $758,000. It's spread throughout the county of Union and the city of Plainfield, so it's as the home city of the grant. It covers the lead inspector, support staff and lead education materials as well.
So it's the same resolution that we had the, the conditional layoff for?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And that this, this, the option of this resolution means that the layoff day will no longer take place.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections?
Resolution R 237-19 authorizing change in the title, text or amount of appropriation.
Are there any questions?
So my question is, in the backup, we have a letter from November 2018, we don't have an updated letter about this grant?
No. When we look at the municipal lines and that, you know, that's what we had and that's what we're reflecting, so there's nothing else to show you with regard to that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying?
Resolution R 238-19 authorizing change order number one finding to Hallican Incorporated.
Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying?
Resolution R 239-19 authorizing approval to open the street on Glenwood Avenue by New Jersey American Water.
Are there any questions?
Yes. So the language of the resolution says that the water company is going to fully pay, that's the language, fully pay the street after they're finished the work. So could we get clarification on what, fully paid?
They're talking about repaving the whole street?
Which is an area that they've done pretty good, that's where they've consumed and do everything, every street that they tried, that they opened. They covered the curve for the area that they opened the street in.
And how big of an area is it?
It's pretty large, it's not maybe six by six, seven by seven, so it can go across the curve.
Might as well work a bit, you know?
Uh, it's supposed to be approved, once we approve this, uh, this motion, it's starting moving on.
In my, to be my reception, but it seems like every time we pave streets, within two or three years, they have to be open, but they never get open before they get paved? Probably not true.
We've seen that, but sometimes. Well, we're trying to just draw a vision to make sure they do that. They're not actually much, it's just happening.
Thank you.
And again, we're really trying to go to the curve because that's what the administration wants to do with everything.
Okay.
Thanks.
Director, do you know, because it said, I believe it was paid recently, how recently was it paid?
About three years.
Okay. About three years.
But this is based off of complaints from residents because of the water quality, was that to the same?
Right. The pressure of the water, etc., right, this was just for, bad pressure, water pressures.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying?
Resolution R 240-19 authorizing lane placement for property cleanup.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying?
Resolution R 241-19 authorize the application and execution of a grant agreement with the Union County Art Rants Program.
Are there any questions?
Yes. Do we know exactly what type of art program the senior superintendent would be doing with this money?
That's a good question. This office funding goes for like jewelry making, drawing, the backdrop in the fashion shows, etc., that's what this money is for.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move.
So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying?
Resolution R 242-19 authorizing approval to submit a $25,000 grant application with the New Jersey Division of Travel and Tourism.
Are there any questions?
Yes. Shouldn't we be funded? Which office or staff person would be responsible for overseeing this grant?
That would be the Department of Economic Development, my department.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve? No.
Move.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying?
Resolution R 243-19 designating South Terrell Urban Renewal LLC as redeveloper for the redevelopment of certain properties.
Are there any questions?
Yes. Is this the Wawa project we've been handling now?
Uh, yes, this is the designation and redevelopment agreement for that particular project, so.
What would be the recourse if the city was to not go into, was to not designate this as a redeveloper?
They would continue to build this project, but without any guarantees of reaching and fulfilling goals of local residents, our local supply, supplier of our street scape goals. So we have street scape requirements that they've agreed to as part of the redevelopment agreement that will allow them to do the street scape from Terrell Road all the way up to, um...
Leland?
Leland, yeah, all the way to Leland. So again, that is what the redevelopment agreement provides in addition to a construction schedule. So they would build the project without any of those requirements. So, uh, they would build a project without any of those requirements.
So. So. Uh, yes. Um, so my concern is that we've had a lot of residents not agree with this project. Have we done the public, have we done the outreach to the public? So that they just understand what's going on and we just don't have this continuing back and forth with this project and the city and the residents?
Well, the, the planning board approved the site plan for the Wawa project. That is the public process. A number of public, uh, he, members of the public attended the planning board meeting on the night that this application was heard. It was approved by the planning board and therefore they have a right to go and implement the project.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, there has a, there's a reference to a financial agreement and redevelopment agreement. Could we just get like an explanation of what is affiliated to that?
Yeah.
Uh, they will not be applying for a financial agreement and that may be because that's usually in our template. Uh, but again, uh, we are not, um, uh, they're not applying and we're not granting a financial agreement for this project.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve? Some.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstained?
Resolution R two forty-four dash nineteen extending Resolution one fifty-two dash nineteen and designating certain properties in need of redevelopment.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any exceptions?
Resolution R two forty-five dash nineteen authorizing the planning board to conduct the area in need of redevelopment.
Are there any questions?
Yes. Um, what is the vision for this site?
At this point, we have not developed a vision for this site. At this point, what we're asking is that the planning board, uh, be allowed to look at it as an area in need of redevelopment. And that means that it would have to meet certain statutory requirements associated with the local redevelopment and housing law. And so right now, all we're requesting is that if the, uh, have, have the planning board to go look at this as an area in need of redevelopment. It's been vacant and empty, uh, for quite a few years. Uh, it's the parking lot that's across the street from the former Mullenberg Hospital. Again, uh, this is the BLIGHT study. The vision for this particular area would be defined as part of the redevelopment plan. And the redevelopment plan occurs long after, uh, well, it occurs in sequence after a study is done. And council will have an opportunity to vote, uh, yea or nay on the redevelopment plan.
Any other questions?
Not a question, but a comment about this one. This, uh, it definitely, I'm, I'm sure it's gonna be the criteria for a redevelopment. My concern about it is what's gonna happen? This, this will come to our consultants to create, well, basically, you know, they, they will help us designate this as a redeveloped area. And then it'll be, become a redevelopment plan if the city council approves it. So the planning board and council will have the final say about what happens in this location should it be designated as a redevelopment area.
Yes, the planning board would make a recommendation and council, uh, gets to vote on that recommendation.
So, so my concern is that our master plan, and I'm really generalizing this, for the most part, it says that redevelopment, residential redevelopment in our city should be concentrated primarily around our train stations and that the character of our existing residential neighborhoods should be maintained. So this property is not near a train station, but it's near the Mullenberg campus, which is gonna have a much increased residential density, which, uh, which I supported. But if, if this comes back to the council as another, yet another residential property, I think we should question it. And I'm just saying this in advance because this may not happen immediately, but I anticipate this will come back to us. And it's on Park Avenue, it's gonna be situated near what will be a lot of residential, which could make it more of a commercially viable property. But at some point, we have to say not all development or redevelopment is necessary, and it's not around the train station. Or maybe that the timing of it is not good. If there's not currently anything other than a residential proposal feasible that a developer would be interested in. We don't have to always go for what the developers want. We don't always have to approve a redevelopment plan, especially when it's increasing the residential density and it's not near a train station. So I'm just mentioning that to the council, bring the thought and see our planning board chair back there, bring the thought for you too.
Any other questions?
So, Director Jackson, I know, um, you know, obviously if you send us a planning board and they're able to, I guess, make a determination, um, are there any, uh, you know, it's a little too early now. Are there any visions or, you know, that you guys see the area being utilized for?
Right now, and, uh, a couple of things are happening simultaneously. Uh, so we had the kickoff, at least internally, of the master plan. Uh, so we talked about the timeline, we talked about, uh, kind of vision and looking at the city overall. Again, our master plan, our previous master plan was done in two thousand nine. We were required, uh, by state statute to update it every ten years. And so we're at the appropriate time in terms of taking a look at the entire city. And, uh, that will give us comprehensive kind of guidelines, overarching guidelines. And, uh, that really the approach for BLIGHT, uh, for property is, you know, you hear people coming to the BLIGHT part about taxes. So, uh, to improve the tax burden on our citizens, we need to have, increase the rate where we can. And certainly, uh, parking lot is not necessarily great, it's best use of a piece of property, uh, in terms of taxable revenue, generating revenue. So again, uh, the process is that we go in, we do a study to say that the area is BLIGHTed, we have certain criteria to look at. Uh, then we go in and we say, you know, here are kind of the development options for this particular property. Uh, quite frankly, uh, we would be building more commercial if there was more demand for more commercial. But we are looking at commercial and quite frankly, commercial follows retail. That's been approved just about in every city in the state of New Jersey. And so again, um, you know, residential, uh, is something that we're looking at to say that it's only gonna be contained, uh, at the train station. Primarily, we'd wanna increase the density around the train station. But that does not necessarily mean that we can increase the density a little in other areas. And so again, they're gonna come back, they're gonna say, based on, uh, the area, what we see here, here are the options. The planning board's gonna be able to hash it out, they do a very good job of hashing out, by the way, uh, and, uh, determine what they would like to recommend to council.
Uh, you know, I would just say for the record that I think it's important that we're careful of putting too much housing, you know, in the city. Obviously, you know, the, the station upgrade is really, it's affordable housing. But I think, you know, to echo Councilman George, we have to be careful with putting too much. So, you know, I would say it would behoove us councilmembers to make sure that we're, um, following this process closely, just to make sure, I mean, obviously with the Mullenberg, like, we're, um, developing that. And that's fairly enough housing for that area. But, you know, places like Giovanna's that just want the business, it's important that we bring enough, uh, commercial businesses or restaurants to make sure that people in those, you know, density populated units are able to utilize. So we will be, you know, paying attention to this.
And they also must wanna come to the area too, so.
I see.
Yeah, cause Giovanna, uh, again, took the best offer it, it got.
Interesting.
So I just wanna flip it here a little bit, okay.
How surprised I have another question?
Okay.
Is there gonna be an opportunity other than the planning board meeting for residents in this area in particular to discuss what it is that they, they want to see, um, when it comes time for us to develop this plan?
Yeah, there, the public input process, uh, there are a couple of places, and I keep trying to explain it over and over again, uh, is, uh, through the master plan process and through the redevelopment process, which is the planning board. If any council member would like to have a forum or community meeting to talk about economic development, I am willing to do that. Uh, so any council member at any time, uh, can ask me to come to a forum to talk about economic development at length. Uh, and I'll be glad to talk about it and, you know, what are the items, uh, that we are balancing as we look at development throughout the city.
So is it possible for the Department of Economic Development to host one of those forums? Or does it have to be, or does it have to be a council member to host those forums?
I would prefer that if, if you're concerned about your constituents, uh, that you would host one of those forums, yeah.
Councilor George?
Director Jackson, I, I appreciate you saying that, and especially that you're saying in the public, I think it's a good idea. I think, uh, certainly the Wawa project may clear to me that we do need to hear from our members, so we'll talk about it and hopefully we can put something together for at least for the second ward.
I agree, I would say whether it's a town hall or some kind of community meeting, there, you know, should be more input outside of, you know, standard housing meeting and or the planning board meeting. So that's something that we will work with the administration to see that we can try to do.
Yeah, let's talk about it more.
Senator Jackson gave, you know, the voting. We also had three of you on committee to do forums before, we haven't gotten them yet. So maybe we'll take this cue and do that, okay? So we can move forward. Okay, any other questions that are different than, I mean?
Make a motion that we accept this?
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any, do you have that, any exceptions?
Resolution R two forty-six dash nineteen authorizing the application and acceptance of Union County, bringing of Union County two thousand nineteen matching grant.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained?
Resolution R two forty-seven dash nineteen authorizing the mayor and the municipal clerk to execute a agreement with the county of Union.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained?
Resolution R two forty-eight dash nineteen authorizes submission of an application to the New Jersey State Department of Health Program, WIC program.
Are there any questions?
Question. So I'm, I'm aware that, uh, this, this grant here is used to fund our department. So what is the overall percentage of this grant in relation to how much it funds our department?
Funds our, uh, department, uh, nearly a hundred percent. It's, uh, seven hundred fifty-one thousand, uh, five hundred sixty-three thousand. The total amount, that's the total amount that we, uh, we receive this grant from the inception of our department.
Which was when, how many years?
Since the inception, fifty-six years ago?
Twenty years.
Twenty years? Twenty. Can you do it?
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve? Some. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained?
Resolution R two forty-nine dash nineteen recognizing July twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen as World Pepe Titus Day.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Your end of the line. We now have two ordinances on first reading, but will you please read ordinance NC twenty nineteen twenty-five title?
NC twenty nineteen dash twenty is the ordinance to amend chapter sixteen, vehicles and traffic, article ten, bus stop, section one, schedule twelve, part two, paragraph three eight.
Are there any questions to the council?
Yes, I have a question. So is this bus stop moving to where, I'm just trying to get a better visual where it's moving, is it moving to where Seven-Eleven is?
Uh, no, uh, the request is on the part of the county. Uh, Terrell Road is a county road. Uh, the bus stop, uh, actually is in the wrong location. Uh, we'd like to have the bus stop some distance from the intersection, so at the intersection of Terrell and South Avenue. The current bus stop is a hundred feet away from, uh, the, uh, far side of South Avenue. And, uh, we're moving it to be a hundred and seventy-five feet away from, uh, South Avenue, the far side side.
So in terms of buildings and structures, where is it gonna be located?
It's really, uh, it's gonna be past Seven-Eleven, it's, it's gonna be on Terrell Road, it's gonna be past Seven-Eleven. It's gonna be past the proposed, uh, uh, entry and exit for Wawa. So it'll be further down, uh, Seven, uh, uh, Terrell Road.
So on the other side of Seventh Street?
No, it's not that far. It's between Seventh and, um, South, yeah.
So how's that, how's this gonna affect the traffic by moving that bus stop even that distance?
It should improve the traffic because you have less traffic at the intersection. Or it should improve the traffic, less traffic at the intersection. You don't have people getting on and off buses closer to the intersection, but further away.
I'm just curious, why wasn't that done before, I mean, why now?
The, uh, the county reviewed the plans for Wawa and they said that they would like to see the bus stop moved further back. And when we went out to measure, it wasn't in the appropriate place in the first place. So, uh, the request is to move it further away from the intersection.
Thank you.
And it's a county road.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I will, uh.
Um, I have one question. Um, in preparation for the second reading, if you can just, I guess, provide us with a map so we can better just understand where it'll be at, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, we'll give you a map. Lot of this attached, but there is a map.
Any other questions? Eleanor, is standing motion to the justice ordinance on first reading?
Move.
Row conference.
Council members, Armani?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Crane?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Vice President Hocke there?
Yes.
Council President Milton Hansen?
Yes.
This ordinance is about good on first reading.
Will you read the NC twenty nineteen twenty-one?
Yes, NC twenty nineteen dash twenty-one is the ordinance to amend chapter six, building, article two, property maintenance, amending registration requirements and leaving a registration fee on owners and creditors of regist, registrable properties.
Are there any questions for the council?
Yes. Can the administration just explain what's changing about this ordinance? Because there's a lot of crossouts in here and I'm not sure if they're all supposed to be crossed out or if something's going on. So you just explain what this ordinance is supposed to be saying.
So thanks for that question, this, it is amended, uh, there are some, uh, reporting requirements that are not even adhered to in this ordinance as well were amended. So if you look through some of the crossouts, it says, uh, reporting to director of inspections, whereas it should say reporting or appealing to director of community development. There's approximately thirteen instances of that. Additionally, there are three instances where it refers to department of, the director of department of, they shouldn't be, uh, director of health association services.
Okay, so literally the whole thing is crossed out, so in preparation for the second reading, but we need to have a cleaner copy. So we can just see what parts are being added, what parts are being taken out. Because the copy that we have here, the whole ordinance with the exception of the first paragraph is completely crossed out. So I don't know what part was supposed to be added where, what part was supposed to be taken out.
I, I will literally table this ordinance because. I, I will literally table this ordinance because there is no, there's, there's no, anything with these proposed in it. And the, the only part that's not crossed out ends, the, the, is that in the third paragraph, it ends with the word for, F O R, F O R. So it just ends mid-sentence. So there's really nothing to read, other than what's crossed out. And I, I scan both of them, something like that. So, can we reintroduce this and I'll just, I'll move to table it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and re-tabled. Uh, well, huh.
Councilmember Zarmadi?
No. Oh, move to table? Yeah, yes.
But I was at best.
Sorry.
Wrong.
Uh, Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
No.
Storch?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Mills-Ranson?
Yes.
Okay, this ordinance is tabled. Uh, and a public hearing on the first ordinance, which was NC two thousand nineteen twenty, would take place after next of finding the city council on August twelfth.
Okay. Right to general comments, we are going to turn to Mayor Adrian O'Meara. And he will give an update on a recent storm.
Well, thank you, Council President. I would ask our active business administrator to lead off and then I will comment on it.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Council President, just want to give a, uh, update of the timeline of what's in place. Uh, on Saturday, June twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, approximately, uh, five thirty P M, parts of New Jersey, including City of Plainfield, experienced severe weather conditions as a result of the storm. There were nearly eighteen hundred homes that were left without electricity and a number of down trees and wires were reported. Uh, we're happy to hear that there were no casualties or reports of injury. An emergency management meeting was called within hours with police, fire, DPW to assess the conditions and execute a plan of action. Uh, the business administrator, chief staff slash director of communications participated in this meeting remotely. Uh, council members Armani and Davis were also present. Uh, updates were immediately made to the city website and local calls were made statewide. Uh, the mayor moderated the situation closely and was in constant communication with the active business administrator, representatives of P C and G. Uh, on Sunday afternoon, a number of power, the number of power averages had reduced from eighteen hundred to a hundred and fifty. Uh, as of nine A M. on Monday, the number was down to less than five. Uh, throughout the remaining days, P C and G coordinated with DPW and collected the remaining degrees across the city. Uh, the administration would like to extend sincere gratitude to all of our first responders, police, fire, DPW. Uh, personnel will always step up to the plate during times of crisis. And special things are also extended to P C and G and the governor's office, who was in constant contact, uh, with the mayor and key personnel after the storm hit to offer assistance.
And so, Council President, what you just heard from our active business administrator is that we had a plan in place for an event that an emergency arose. One did, uh, occur and I want to thank our active business administrator for the great leadership that he provided, that he provided and the support that came from our first responders. We were able to address all issues and we were able to assist residents with having their power restored. And I think that this is a demonstration of the fact that we had a plan in place, we executed on the plan, and everything worked out, I don't want to say perfectly, but I don't think that we could have asked for a better outcome, given the fact that this was a storm that came out of the blue. And so, for, for, for those who have a view on one side or the other, I think that we should thank our emergency personnel and thank our active business administrator for a job well done, given the fact that this was a very bad storm that came through and made a great deal of damage in a short period of time. So, I don't think we could have done it anywhere. So I want to thank all those who played a part in making sure that things got done. And for anyone who thinks that the administration was a gun to the ball and that we did not lead the way in making sure that things got done, you are mistaken. So I want to thank those that were involved.
Council President, if I may?
Sorry?
I said, if I may, please leave me.
Uh, can I, can I let you make a statement?
Um, I do want to echo the mayor in saying that last, two seconds ago, the storm was, um, the handling of the storm was very successful, um, from our Public Works Department to our Police Department to our Fire Department. Um, Councilman Armani and I did have a chance to go into the community and see the damage firsthand. Um, and we want to also again thank active business administrator Jawa for your leadership. Thank you.
Okay, we want to thank you. We need to say that, um, when we were, of course, the mayor did ask the active business administrator to reach out to, uh, actually, three of you that were here. So, thank back the two of you that went and knocked on some doors. Okay, uh, we're now in general comments. A total of sixty minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk for the record. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed will be limited to five minutes before we stamp over.
Good evening. Good evening. Beverly Callan, twelve seventy-two Park Avenue. Um, I wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank, um, especially the first responders and, um, specifically, um, Mr. McHugh, who just went and stayed with us a good part of the evening and late into the night, uh, with assisting residents. And also, uh, councilpersons Armani and Davis, who came by, uh, spoke with the residents and just gave a warm, uh, burst of energy to, to help those of us who were experiencing the distress from the storm. Thank you.
Johnny Pritchard, Longway of seven two-three, Orange Town, at Plainfield. Now four one zero, Spears out of the garden. Two things that I'd like to address the city council. First, we need to back our soldiers, sailors, Marines, Coast Guard, United Air, United State as they endeavor to protect us and defend us and protect our freedom. We fight, we failed to do so during the war in Vietnam. And during that time, we lost sixteen men from Plainfield who lost their lives while fighting for our country. When the rest of, uh, the Plainfield sons came back, they were called Nazis, murderers, baby killers. I think that we're Nazi, ought to be retired once and for all. It's just as bad as it ever worked, which of course I will not, I repeat, not use. The former soldier there despise, nor count him as a stranger. Remember, he's his country's stay in a, and day in our danger. And secondly, we need to react to a Mullenberg hospital. We need to shelve this residential thing at the Mullenberg side once and for all because this city and surrounding area need a hospital. We need it very badly. One moment our own attack occurs, we'll have casualties and we'll need that hospital very, very badly. And the sooner I clean the Mullenberg, the better off we are, would be. Don't leave us up there.
Uh, sorry, what's your shot? What time? Okay, one identity is in the first on the town.
Uh, Joanne McAluso, thirteen fifty-five Cushion Road, Plainfield. Uh, happy birthday, Ashley. You look lovely. And actually, it falls in with my thing too. It's like, I'm a city resident and I went to the meeting, the planning board meeting, it was the first meeting I was aware of regarding the Wawa project. And I was, I was offended that the, the, the people couldn't speak to the, the issues that they had. They were limited, very limited. So I'm really heartened that a number of you have called for more city involvement and that's important and that you're asking more questions of the resolutions. It's really, really important to city members. Um, as I see it, the bus stop is going to be at the corner of, they're only leaving that house on the corner of Seventh and Terrell. Terrell is parallel to Leland. It doesn't meet Leland. So that bus stop is going to be almost at the corner of Seventh and Terrell Road. Um, oh, the other thing I have, one more thing I have. Kudos to, uh, the way the city handled the storm. I was on the east end of Plainfield that night and nothing happened on the east end of Plainfield. So when I came back at nine thirty, there was a number of detours back and forth. And finally, I got to my house and there was a huge tree across my house. Plainfield, uh, Scotch Plains cut the tree right in the middle of Cushion Road. So I can get in and out and people can get in and out. However, the tree is still blocking the Plainfield side of Cushion Road. And everything else I see is cleared, so kudos to everybody about that. And, uh, I'm talking to the commission about having the tree removed from the Plainfield side of the Cushion Road. Thank you for your indulgence.
Good evening. I'm Alexander, fourteen thirty-seven Edwin Place. I have to say, we had a problem on Edwin Place with a large tree falling across a neighbor's yard. The, the squad, everyone, fire department, they were fantastic in resolving what they could. P C and G did a great job coming next day, getting out what they needed to do. The one thing I want to mention though, that particular street, we've had four trees removed because of disease. This particular tree that fell during the storm was another one that the owner, homeowner had requested to be cut down, but instead, only a couple of large branches were cut down. All the trees on that block was pretty much planted at the same time. If the city could come by and take, reevaluate all those large oak trees, it would be appreciated because obviously, they're, they had left their life expectancy at fifty-plus years. Thank you.
Yes, the right one. I'm a bad issue, but for the previous speakers is, I'm McAluso. Is the tree still across, uh, pushing home?
It's still in the road.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
But the other question, what's true for the trees, Cushion near Cannon? Nope, it's last week.
Every, my block.
Every place.
Yes, sir.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I'm Sal LaRosa and I have one four zero, zero five, Watchon Avenue. And, uh, I want to inform you that the Pacific Parking at Meadowgood Railroad Station has increased the fee, the quarterly fee, uh, for parking at those areas that are south and north street from one dollar five per quarter to one hundred eighty dollar per quarter. So an increase of about eighty percent. And, uh, so, you know, as a commuter, you know, with many other commuters, we are kind of astonished by the fact that there would be such a stiff interest. Now, I don't know who, I think the Pacific Park is, uh, Pacific Park is just a manager company. I don't think they own the, the property. So I don't, I don't know if the property is the property of the city or is the property of the New Jersey Transit. So I wanted to ask you, what kind of support you may recommend, uh, to, you know, to bring our voice to New Jersey Transit and, uh...
Yes, that's, that's correct. The city only has jurisdiction over the fees for municipal lots. Uh, that is regulated by New Jersey Transit, and so that customer would have to be directed to New Jersey Transit.
So the, the city has no, no say, fortunately. Would the city support the, um, request by the, the resident?
We can't sue without having the facts.
Say again?
We cannot commit without having the facts.
Okay, thank you.
Nancy, you have eleven twenty on your line. At the last meeting, I, um, brought you some statistics about fire pits and I was wondering if there's any movement on that. Um, yesterday it was eighty-one degrees in my neighborhood. There was a fire pit going. I don't, um, I don't know why. Um, the biggest issue is the safety issue because there are no, um, there's a top, but it's not put on and there's no fire suppression area near it. So, I would really hope that the city will look into, um, what other communities have done, um, as far as fire pits and bonfires and make sure that they're permitted. Because I really think it's a matter of public safety and I think it's also a safety matter for the fire department. So that when they roll it up on somebody's house, they know whether they have to go in a house or behind a house. Um, because that lets them know the location of where all these, um, hazardous areas are. My other question is, I, I sent an email last night to one of my freeholders. Um, if you've been watching the news, you see that a lot of the, um, news people, at least one of them, uses, um, Union County resident area, Berkeley Heights, to, um, broadcast when forty-fives in Bedminster. My question is, is Union County having to supply any security for those newscasters? Because if Union County has to supply security for those newscasters, I do not want it to come out of my taxpayer dollars from Union County. Let it come out of the federal funding so it's equal across the country, but I do not want to have to pay for security for broadcasters in Union County when he's in Somerset County. Thank you very much.
Council President? I just wanted to, uh, inform M C that, uh, the council president has, uh, has been working currently on doing research on the matter regarding fire pits. Uh, we're, um, taking a look at the matter and trying to see if we can draft some type of legislation to address it.
Thank you. Saying no one else come to the mic, I ask for a motion to close this general comment. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, before ask for a motion of adjournment, uh, Councilwoman Davis, we all wish you a very happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
I can't move.
Thank you.